All right, thank you, welcome back. So our panel this, our next panel is going to be about the budget process. And I'm going to just go through very short introductions of our panelists, but you can just trust that these are the people that you can, you know, are turned to to understand the budget. These are as good experts as you can possibly hope for. So going from my left is Michael Dardia. He's the Deputy Director of the New York City Office of Management and Budget. Carol Kellerman is the President of the Citizens Budget Commission. Ronnie Lowenstein is the Director of the New York City Independent Budget Office. James Parrott is the Deputy Director and Chief Economist of the Fiscal Policy Institute, and the person you always see quoted when talking about the budget. And Mark Shaw is the Vice Chancellor for Finance and Administration at CUNY. So if we could have a round of applause for our panel. So, you know, a lot of the incoming council members are like myself, have no background in finance, have not, you know, some profound knowledge of municipal budgeting. How do you, and yet their job is to determine this extraordinarily important document for the city. How do you begin to approach the budget if you don't have a background in municipal finance and budgeting? For anyone who would like.
Hire good staff.
Let's, we'll start at the end with Mark.
Seriously, hire good staff, because, you know, budgeting is sort of, it's an exotic little enterprise on, you know, this, at a base level, it's real simple. It's just arithmetic, math, as they say, you know, revenues are this, expenditures are this, they have to balance at the end of the day. But the intricacies of budgeting, especially in New York, are actually pretty complicated. It's like running a very large Fortune 100 corporation. And it is very complicated, and it takes budget experts to actually understand a lot of it. And so, I wasn't kidding, I think you should look to have staffs that either have some budget experience and/or, you know, are graduates of the Baruch School of Public Affairs, for instance, to plug the place we're in. You know, because it's a great place for young people to come into government to work for council members. And, you know, it is the kind of training that they do get in schools of public affairs programs like at Baruch. But at the end of the day, it's, you know, it's also reading the documents, you know, everybody and their mother watches over New York City ever since the fiscal crisis. So there's lots of information out there, you know, some of it's a little difficult to understand, but the information is there, and if you find the right people to help you with it, you actually can figure out the major portions of the budget and the things that you want to get involved in.
James?
I thought you'd just add to that, and I'll save Ronnie having to toot her own horn. I guess I would suggest that you first look at the website of the Independent Budget Office, because they have some sort of introductory materials there on what the budget process is, what the calendar, what the budget cycle is, as well as some reports on a whole range of topics related to the city budget, as well as periodic reports that sort of analyze the latest proposals from the mayor and OMB's office on the city budget. Then, you know, I would look at the budget documents themselves. OMB's website is nicely organized. There is a level of transparency on New York City's budget that you probably don't find in many other places around the country. So it is, it is going to take a lot of homework to do that, but weighing in on the budget is one of the most important things the city council does, so it's worth the investment of serious quality time in trying to understand that.
Ronnie?
I was going to add to that, yeah, we published two very basic primers to the city budget, one on the city's operating budget and one on the city's capital budget, and they're in full color. And we've got copies, yes, I'm being, we have copies of them in the back of the room if anyone is interested. And the other thing we do do is, we offer to meet, not just with you, but also with your staff, when you've assembled staff, and go through how to read the documents. And we've done that for a number of council members in the past, and we'd be delighted to do it for any of you.
Carol?
I would echo what Ronnie said about the IBO's materials being very good introductory documents, in addition to hiring good staff, Mark Shaw's excellent advice. The finance staff of the council is very experienced, and you should use them as a resource. And then, yes, Citizens Budget Commission is a nonprofit, it's not a government agency. We also publish a lot of material on the budget. We have a budget briefing PowerPoint that we actually sent to all the new members of the council, I think in October. It's been updated, and we are happy to brief council members and their staffs. We actually had our own conference yesterday where I presented the more updated version, and you can go to the Citizens Budget Commission website and watch the live stream of it, or have your staff do that. It's right there. And, yes, it's complicated, but I think council members can figure it out, and I would really urge people to feel competent about this themselves, and understand how it works, because it is an extremely important part of what you do. And the budget is really where all the policy decisions kind of hit the road, and it's really important to understand it.
Michael?
So, I think apropos of what Mark said first, the budget is a big complicated issue. So it's good to look at what IBO and CBC put together in terms of getting a sense for the big picture, and then you'll all have your own interests, and that's probably the first place to dive in and get particulars rather than try and master the whole landscape. And then lastly, at OMB, probably the highest volume of interaction my staff has with council staff is on the CP process. So when you want to use bond funding, capital dollars, there's a CP certificate to proceed, so we have to approve all that. And there are oftentimes some very basic issues that keep coming up over and over again. So the sooner you have a staff member to first talk to council finance staff, who are excellent, and then second, have them drill down and understand the CP process, because that's the sort of technical, boring vehicle.
Tell them what CP is.
To actually, certificate to proceed. So you, you can make an allocation of capital dollars for a given organization or purpose or project, and then a bunch of agencies touch it, and then eventually it comes to us, and we have to approve it. And that's not just a budgetary approval, but there's legal review, whether it's legitimate public purpose, and it's good for, it's a good bond spend in terms of tax exempt purpose. No need to belabor it now, but just say, this is, this is an issue that trips up a lot of people early and often. So having one person in your staff to understand that would probably save you a lot of time and effort.
Mark, you talked about the importance of hiring good staff. I mean, I'm sure that everyone, all the elected officials here know that everyone and their brother calls themselves a campaign consultant, right? And like, everyone knows how to run your campaign, but in practicality, you know, there's very few people who really know how to do that well. How do you know if someone is actually adept at being able to navigate the budget and isn't, you know, just saying that they have a set of skills that isn't necessarily in their wheelhouse?
You know, it's like hiring anybody else. I mean, you bring people in, and you talk to them, and you find out, you know, what kind of skills they have, and, you know, just listen to them talk about the budget, and what they understand the budget to be, and get their opinions about it. You know, one of the other things that's really important to understanding New York City's budget is to understand New York State. You know, and it's really important to have, you know, the understanding of the city in the context of the state, because in point of fact, you know, as a city council member, while you have an interest in all the various parts of the budget, you know, let's go to the tax side for a minute. On the tax side, the only place where the city council has the sole authority, along with the mayor, is on the real property tax. So for any other tax proposals that one might have, that you're, you know, as you're talking to staff about whatever ideas one might have for proposing other kinds of taxes or tax relief for economic development purposes, most of those things require understanding the state also. So I think, you know, when you're interviewing people for jobs, for instance, and you want budget expertise, you want them to both understand the city budget, but also you want them to understand the state budget, because there's a lot of interaction between the state and the city budget.
Yes.
In my experience at hiring at the CBC, there are many really bright, capable, enthusiastic people, interested in city and state government, who want to talk about policy, but they don't like numbers. And you need people who have some quantitative skills, who know how to use an Excel spreadsheet at least, who aren't afraid of looking at data, not just talking about big policy principles, because really, at the end of the day, everything is going to be driven by arithmetic. So look for people who aren't, who have some quad skills, who took statistics, who are interested in actually looking at what the table says, not just the textual description of the tables.
You know, one kind of common campaign trope that we hear is about, like, I'm going to get into office, I'm going to cut the waste out of the budget, right? And that's how I'm going to open up gazillions of dollars to do all the policy initiatives that I want to do. How do you know what is waste in the budget? And how do you know what, you know, maybe it's money that is already allocated for something else? Maybe Ronnie?
That's a good question, and I think we grapple with this year in year out. One thing that IBO does every year is produce a volume called, we call the options volume. It came out last Wednesday for the year, and it includes proposals to cut spending or raise taxes, the whole idea being, here are over 90 things you could do to gain additional resources. And we try to, the tax ones are often fairly obvious, there are variations on every possible tax you can think of. But when it comes to the spending cuts, it's much more difficult, and it's much more difficult to identify things that may not be all that productive, or resources that might be duplicated. So we grapple with this a lot, to see where we come out on some of it, take a look at this year's options volume. The thing that distinguishes the options volume is we don't, we don't promote any of the options. Every single option has, as far as we can make it, an equally balanced pros and cons paragraph on why you might want to do this, in terms of increasing efficiency, or increasing fairness, or promoting better delivery of services. But an equal number of, well, here's why this is really not a great idea.
James?
Well, council members will be on one or more committees. The city council has two rounds of hearings on the budget each year. After the mayor releases the preliminary budget, it's usually due around mid-January for an incoming mayor, they usually get permission to delay that a little bit, to give them a little more time to try and understand on their own behalf the massive city budget. So this year is likely to come out in early February. So the council will have a round of hearings then, that will run in February and early March. And then the mayor will sort of factor in the feedback that's gathered from the preliminary budget hearings and other things that happen, and there might be some conversations between council leadership and the mayor's office and OMB on the budget. And then the executive budget comes out for the coming fiscal year. That will come out around the end of April or early May. There'll be another round of hearings, and then the council will negotiate the adopted budget following that, to adopt a budget by the end of June. Gets, sometimes it gets adopted well before the end of June. So in those hearings, committees, there'll be hearings on every part of the budget. So the committee you're on will hold a hearing, and you'll have an opportunity to ask the commissioners and budget staff from the city about particular areas. It's well advised, I think, I've sat through a lot of those hearings, and they can be a little bit tedious, for council members to really do your homework before you pose a question. And, you know, work with the, with your own staff, with the council finance staff, to try and understand those areas. If you do have some concerns about possible waste in areas, I think you, you really have to study that area very carefully. There might be some bigger things going on in the budget where there's, it's not such a clear-cut issue of waste, but there could be some issues of judgment, and, you know, what sort of policy is the, is the mayor or the various city agencies trying to pursue in that. So there are lots of opportunities, lots of things to ask about, not just things in your own district, how a certain program is playing out in your own district, although certainly you're entitled to, and it's incumbent upon you in terms of your ability to serve your constituents to make sure that those programs are working well. But I guess all of this comes down to that you, it takes a lot of preparation, but there are opportunities to engage commissioners and staff on pursuing things.
Yeah, sorry. Well, so I would say Ronnie's mentioned their, their hit parade of ways to either raise or save money. CBC has the same exercise, and I would recommend that, if you don't want to watch the streaming video from yesterday, they also have a large book, which I'm assuming is available in PDF form.
Yes.
That is definitely worth a look, in terms of the work that they've done on some of these issues. But the other thing is, I mean, sort of the issue of productivity, because nothing really comes, it'd be easy, but nothing really comes with the word "waste" on the budget line. And so, some of what many people have derided as the budget dance, which I guess we're going to get into in a little bit, is really differing perceptions of efficiency in terms of some of these provisions of public services. But the other thing is to look at, you know, we had a pretty nasty recession, and overnight our revenues fell by over $5 billion. So that got our attention. And we have had agencies cut spending. Some of it, the first couple of rounds is really just cutting spending from planned spending, so it's not real cuts year over year. But after a while, it actually got to be some real cuts as well. Those are called PEGs, Program to Eliminate the Gap, the budget gap, gap between revenues and expenses, which, as Mark said, we have, unlike most jurisdictions, we have to actually end the year in balance, according to generally accepted accounting principles, which are a nightmare on their own. So if you look at what we've done with PEGs, that gives you a sense for how one can try and wrest some kind of efficiency out of agencies' budgets while preserving as best you can the actual level of services being provided.
Carol?
Let me just add one cautionary note on all of this. The city's budget documents are really good in terms of control, making sure that New York City doesn't once again wind up effectively bankrupt. But in terms of lining up spending with programs, it does very poorly. There have been efforts by OMB and the council and IBO and others to try to push towards more of a programmatic focus, but if there's a program you're interested in, you're not going to be able to flip open the city budget and see, oh, that's the program, and here's what they're doing with it. It doesn't work that way. And so, it makes the process more difficult to get into, and it makes those hearings that James discussed particularly important that you do your homework first.
Carol, is there a great deal of waste in the budget, or is that kind of a myth? And is one man's waste another man's necessity?
That's exactly what I was going to say. Look, the budget is about $76 billion a year. As you all know, there are 300,000 employees, it's a big operation. Of course, there's actual wrongdoing going on, and there is, there are things that are not being done efficiently that could be tightened up, and you could call that waste. But you're not going to, frankly, council members, you're not going to find money to run entire new programs and services out of savings from waste and fraud. You're just not. They're episodic, and when you get into questions about productivity, one person's waste is another person's essential service that employs a lot of people. So when I hear candidates and people out in the public sphere talking about, you know, we're going to curb waste, fraud, and abuse, and use the money for X, I would not expect that you're really going to find billions of dollars that way. That doesn't mean you shouldn't be vigilant, and I think this is an area where you have media always looking for examples of things, and they are an effective partner in that respect. But really, it's, when you are talking about your new priorities, things that you think government should be doing that it's not doing, it comes down to making choices, and they're not easy choices, because everything that city government is doing now, it is doing for a reason. You may not think it's a good reason, but it's got an interest group or a constituency behind it that cares very deeply about it, and you can get into how to do these things more effectively and save some money, but it's not going to change the overall allocation of funding.
There was a fascinating article I read a few months ago in the Atlantic Monthly about looking at whether, you know, whether the money that we allocate for different programs actually has some sort of return, whether it's worth what we put into it. And it was kind of making the argument that elected officials don't generally want to see how the fiscal implications of the programs that they fund, because then they might be reckoning as to their decisions. How can, how can you do that? How can you evaluate a program and be like, you know, we spent all this money on this education program, but you know what? It doesn't really yield the dividend that is, that, you know, is equivalent with our investment in it.
I would say that there are some things that you have to do that you just do, whether they have a measurable result or not, but for the most part, one of the things that CBC is always advocating for that isn't happening is performance-based budgeting, where you not only can look at the budget and see how much money is spent on different programs, which, as Ronnie said, is not the way it's done now, but then you could actually have outcome measurements to see what is this producing. And it's, it's, we don't have that. We have what we call units of appropriation, which are very broad. You know, the agencies would prefer that they be broad, so that they have more discretion within the units. But other places are increasingly having it possible that you can actually see how much money is spent, not just on personnel at ACS, but on childcare at ACS versus foster care at ACS. And then you could divide the number of foster care children by the total, and look at how many are freed for adoption or returned to their parents, for example, and see what it costs per child to get those kind of outcomes. It's tough to do. It can be done, but I think we need to do that. I think the thing that people talk about mostly is, the most compelling example is economic development programs. We give a lot of tax breaks to people, to businesses. What do we get for that, in terms of new jobs, in terms of salary per job? We need, and the council members can be very important in wanting to see not just how much is spent on things, but what's the actual ultimate outcome.
There's, of course, the mayor's management report, which has attempted to do this over the years, and various administrations' enthusiasm for the mayor's management report has waxed and waned over time. So there have been times when that's a reasonable first start to looking at outcomes. I think it's been disappointing in recent years in terms of the effort and seriousness which it's done, but it would be great if the new administration, perhaps with some prodding by the council, because it is definitely in your interest, you know, started taking that more seriously in terms of looking at specific programs, trying to come up with outcome measures to see how well they're doing, and give you a sense of how well you're investing.
Michael?
So, obviously, I'm in an awkward position, but the administration, what is it now, six years ago, created this thing called the Commission on Economic Opportunities. In fact, Dick Parsons chaired it, and was looking at new ways of addressing some social problems. And as part of the funding agreement, we insisted there be an evaluation component. So the idea was, there was sort of this research pot to engage in pilot programs, and then there was a very formal evaluation process that we were involved with to evaluate the efficacy of these programs, and if they were deemed successful by whatever the metrics were in the beginning, then we took the program and the money and moved it into the agency itself, where it would hopefully be embedded and have some ownership of the agency and sort of continue and hopefully grow. And I can say that even on a very focused program, set of programs like that, that came out of research literature, first of all, it's very difficult to come up with criteria that you would use to evaluate them. It's very difficult to set up a fair comparison in many cases in terms of, you know, a randomized control is the gold standard in the research world, and it's very, you know, well-nigh impossible to do in social programs. And, you know, then you run into the basic agency behavior, which is, somebody wanted to do this in the first place, and it sounded like a good idea, even sometimes to us. And then it doesn't quite make the standard, and you can always tell a story by why it's close. And then you run into one person's waste is another person's opportunity. So the idea that you could, at some broad level, come up with performance-based budgeting across the board, I think is extremely difficult. And that's not to say one shouldn't always be minding our mantra of getting the most public service for the fewest dollars, but it's, there's no simple exercise.
And I think it brings up another point, which is, I think it's really important for council members to sort of understand their role in the budget, right? You know, Michael's talking about a lot of things that OMB does during the course of the year in terms of the implementation of the budget, and the truth of the matter is the council, the council has no authority in the implementation of the budget. The council's role in the budget is actually in the negotiation and adoption of the budget, and it's an incredibly important part of the budget process, and it really is where policy does get made, and that is where, you know, all of the elected officials have their cumulative impact. But it's just about setting the priorities for the city. At the end of the day, the city is run and managed by the executive branch, and the, you know, the role of the council in that regard is to, during the course of the year, hold oversight hearings on the agencies of the city budget, and, you know, and watch what they're doing, and comment about what they're doing. The purpose of all those comments are to have, you know, ammunition for the decision-making process in the following fiscal year's budget when these issues come up again. But I think it's important to distinguish, and for the council members to understand what their role is. At the end, the end of the process, New York City is an extremely strong executive mayor, formal government, and, you know, in order to be effective council members, I think first and foremost, you need to understand what your role is.
And I was just going to ask all the panelists, I mean, are there any other kind of fundamental understandings that you think that the council member should have going into, into the process about their role, or about what, you know, they should really consider first and foremost?
Sounds like pretty good advice, okay.
Yes?
Go ahead, go ahead.
I think it's, there's, there's always a question about what the revenue forecasts are, and how much revenue might be available in the next year's budget that could, obviously you want to have enough funds to continue funding the things that people consider important and essential in the budget, and a lot of times, that might be the whole budget for the current year. But if you're talking about funding new programs, and you're wondering where the resources come from, oftentimes people will look to the prospect of revenue growth for that. So that's a question of, you know, again, working with the council's finance staff, they have economists that assess OMB's revenue forecast, the outside monitors of the city budget, the city controller, the state controller, the financial control board also issue periodic reports that it's worth your effort in digesting those and trying to understand that, because that'll give you sort of a different perspective on, on, on things from the perspective of those offices. So again, that's a lot to make sense of, but it's, you know, it, you need to take all of that in to sort of evaluate and contribute toward what the council perspective on revenue forecast should be. Now, I'm not saying that there's always, that there's an inherent tendency for OMB to understate the revenue forecast and the council, you can always look to the council finance staff to come up with $200 million, $300 million, and so on. I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that you need to understand how those forecasts are done, what the relationship between the economy and what's happening in the economy affects those revenue forecasts, and the outside forces that affect other parts of the revenues. City taxes account for a lot of city revenues, but there are also, what happens in the state budget, as Mark talked about, is very important, what happens at the federal level. You know, that's a particularly uncertain element right now, how that affects the city budget. So you need to understand, have some sense of the revenue side of the budget as well.
I'm sorry, just one moment, just to throw into the mix too. James, you talked about revenue forecasts. To what degree are the numbers politicized? You know, to, are they really empirical, or are they, you know, somehow re- You know, were they really empirical, or they're, you know, somehow representing an elected official's agenda?
Okay, well, the main reason, when you look back at the charter debate in '88, '89, the main reason IBO was established was to come up with a full-fledged bottoms-up forecast for tax revenues, because the bottom line is, one of the big reasons that the executive branch has so much power is, at the end of the day, it's OMB and the mayor that decides the size of the pie. And that's, it's huge, and it colors everything. Now, we can come up with as apolitical a revenue forecast as we can, and we do, and we like to think that our voice, along with others', has some suasion over where things go at the end of the day. But at the end of the day, it's OMB that determines exactly how much revenues you're going to have. And they've used that power in the past.
Used it or abused it?
We can go back, we don't have to.
Well, we did go there, so let's do it. So, it's my group that does the tax forecast for the city. I've been doing this for nine years. Came here from West Coast, I'm a New Yorker, but I came here from a Stanford-affiliated think tank, and I had done some work on forecasting of various taxes for some commissions out in California. I can say, in the nine years I've been doing this, not once has the mayor ever told me what the number should be, or whether the number was too high or too low. The guy is a total data sponge. He's incredibly savvy. And as Dick Parsons was saying, he knows, he's among, and he knows a lot of the 1% who live in the city or work in the city. So, he's actually often able to provide sort of qualitative feedback on something we've said from our numbers. But when we do the forecast, so I have five people in the econ group, 18 people in the tax group, when we do the forecast, we start with a US, a forecast of the US economy from the two big outside forecasters, Moody's Analytics and Global Insight. And then, that's a feedback to our own model of the New York City economy. We supplement that by information about the real estate market and Wall Street. And then, we have a panel of outside economic advisors, who we meet with a month and a half before each of the two budgets, when we have to put out a real revenue forecast. So, we call it as we see it. James and I have fun testifying against each other in the labor arbitration hearings on this very subject. And, you know, if you're not in my shoes, and you make forecasts, including that people just do economic forecasts, if you're wrong, oops, and then you do another forecast next month, next quarter, whenever. If I make a forecast, and it's too high, everybody says we're hiding money, but we have money that we can spend on programs that all of you will collectively be interested in and will have to vote for. If I'm wrong on the downside, people get laid off. Yeah. People get laid off, programs get shut down, and because government spending is extremely sticky, on the downside at least, that means that you can't even make rational decisions. So, in 2009, when, after Lehman went away and the world went into a deep recession, we lost over $5 billion within months, and we were scrambling, had, you know, we thought we were in a depression. We had a few months there where we really thought this was it. And trying to figure out how you respond to that quickly, and we had a resource, which was, over the preceding five years, we had built up a sort of operating surplus of $8 billion, and we were widely derided for that. But then, if you look at what happened in the crash, that was dribbled in to avoid the kind of cuts that everyone else has done. We have had a reduction in the city's workforce of about 3% versus the average for similar governments around the country of 11%. So, 8% of the city's workforce, 25,000 people, are the beneficiaries of being prudent in how you forecast revenue.
And you've, you know, there's a natural conservatism, and I think you've done a very professional job, but just go one administration back, and Rudy Giuliani, there's a financial control board meeting, a remnant of the bankruptcy that happens every summer, and in his farewell appearance before the financial control board, Rudy Giuliani said, "Well, here's how I did it. Every year, year in and year out, we had OMB lowball the revenue forecast, and that's how we were able to control spending and lower taxes and implement what we wanted to do." He was, you know, I think it was a perversion of the process, but, you know, others are out there watching.